Well, good evening, everyone. We would like to call our special meeting Monday, September 18th, special meeting to order. We welcome all of you who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us remotely. At this time, we will have the invocation. I ask that you please stand for the prayer. We'll ask the councilwoman, Brenda McNair, to give us the prayer immediately following. If we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Thank you for leading us, loving us, even giving up your life so that we might be restored to an intimate everlasting fellowship with you, our Creator. Because you are our shepherd, our protector, our defender, we desire to share some of our needs with you. Listen to each of our hearts as we silently share our most private and personal needs. Father, touch our minds and our hearts on today. Touch each person in this room that we might come to a decision that would support our entire city, not just our city, but the entire world. May see us as an example. And Father, we give you praise. We give you honor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Counselor, at this time, as we move forward, we have the approval of the agenda. If we could have a motion to approve, we'll use our...
You'll approve, Mayor.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember here, second by Councilmember Thompson, and Counselor, going forward, we'll use the pads for the vote request. All right, there's a motion, any discussion on the motion? All right, Counselor, look to you for action on the approval of the agenda. Mayor?
Dawkins, Mr. Green.
All right. Okay, I think Councilmember Benavente is getting set in green. All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those here, as well as Councilmember Dawkins online. Motion carries ten oh. So as we move to the next item, we thank those who have joined us. It was a bit of confusion last week, I understand, in terms of what tonight's meeting will entail. Tonight, we set aside a special meeting to review the youth protection ordinance as presented or proposed, youth protection ordinance. We wanted this item to be in and of itself on the agenda without any other items, so that we could spend the amount of time we need to work through any of the details and concerns that we've heard. We had agreed at the conclusion of last Monday's meeting that a public hearing will take place once, and if there is a final ordinance that will be presented, so that the public can weigh in on that version of the ordinance. And so I understand those were anticipating to speak tonight. If that wasn't clear, it is my apologies that that was conveyed that way, but we felt that it was necessary to have the public hearing, once the final version is passed, if it is passed and presented to the public, so that you could speak favorably or against. And so with that being said, I thank you for your understanding, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Manager for the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Brayden, if you would, come forward. He has a brief presentation, and toward the end of the presentation, he also has the ordinance, proposed ordinance framed for further council discussion and direction.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. As we go over the actual PowerPoint proposal, I'd like to pass these, this folder around for the council to review, as a reference to some things that are pertinent to the conversation tonight. As I spoke previously about the proposed curfew, it is that in general, a proposal for consideration as a way to deal with some of the problems we're experiencing as a city as it relates to youth and violent crime. We understand that this is in the early phases of what a proposal should be, and we're trying to craft that or lay that out for the council, so they have a good understanding of that. I've attended multiple meetings over the past several, two weeks, where there's been discussion. I want to address some of the misconceptions and misunderstandings about the proposed curfew as it sits, as it was presented. So, in general, a quick overview of the curfews. I think it's important to outline and define what is a juvenile. Who is a juvenile? North Carolina law defines a juvenile as any person under the age of 18 who is not married, emancipated, or in the military. However, the juvenile court only has jurisdiction over juveniles who are alleged to be delinquent or undisciplined. As it pertains to curfew laws, you know, curfew ordinances have been around for well over a century. Curfews are first used to curb the actions of young people in Omaha in 1880. They have been in effect for over decades in many municipalities, including some of our larger cities such as Chicago, Philadelphia, LA, St. Louis, and San Francisco. If you look to the diagram I have there of, you know, the progression of a child from a newborn to an adolescent, I use this to depict and give us a reference, as I discuss the next item, as it relates to juveniles or children, okay? I believe that if I was out at 2:00 in the morning, and I was to come across a three-year-old wandering in a parking lot, everybody in this room would expect that I, as a police officer, would get out and ensure the safety and well-being of that child. I don't think anyone would argue that. I think everyone would agree, if that was a four-year-old child, they'd expect the same response from their police force. A four-year-old, a five-year-old, a six-year-old. I think the question on the table for tonight is, at what point does it turn from the officers looking out for the best interests of that child, who's wandering around in a parking lot at 2:00 in the morning? Is that age 12, when it's no longer in the best interests of the child, but a violation of their civil rights? Is it 13? Is it 14? Is it 15? So I think what a curfew does, it helps us define what a juvenile is, and what the expectations and the response of those officers when they see those children out in the wee hours of the morning, walking around our neighborhoods, loitering in our closed parking lots, loitering in the gas stations. So that's just the generalized overview of our curfew as it stands. Want to make sure we address the who, what, when, where, and why. Who, who does this curfew ordinance affect? Juveniles less than 18 years of age, and potentially parents or legal guardians of a juvenile in question. We'll get into a little further what that involvement is, but this is what the ordinance who directly affect. What, a curfew ordinance and associated penalties. That's what we're going to discuss tonight. That's what's up for the proposal. What are the outlines of this ordinance? What are the associated penalties for violations of the ordinance? The when, Monday through Friday, 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Saturday and Sunday, 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. For individuals aged 16 and 17 years of age. Monday through Sunday, 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. For anyone less than 16 years of age. And the truancy hours, as proposed in the ordinance that was given to council, would indicate Monday through Friday, on any school day, between 7:30 and 4:30 p.m. For anyone less than 18 years of age. Where, anywhere in the incorporated city limits of Fayetteville. Why, to address juvenile crime and safety, and to address parental responsibility for their children. And at the bottom of this, I've also included the statutory basis for juvenile curfews as related to North Carolina law. General Statute 160A-198, which states, "A city may, by an appropriate ordinance, impose a curfew on persons of any age less than 18." Why recommend a curfew? Well, throughout our conversations over the past several months, we've talked about juvenile crime, youth crime, violent crime, and some of the many questions that have been asked is, what can be done to address violent crime amongst our youth? In my opinion, the proposal as it's put forth does have provisions that would address violent crime amongst our youth. I've been to multiple shootings, that we'll discuss later in this presentation, between the hours of the morning, which the curfew would encompass. What proactive approach can we take towards addressing violent crime amongst our youth? So when we talk about, we do a good job of responding to shootings, once they've happened. We do a good job of investigating shootings, once they have happened. But how do we have an interaction that prevents the shooting from occurring? I'll talk to you later about a shootout that occurred at a gas station about 12:00 midnight from car clubs that were just loitering in the parking lot, and one of the scenes, there were 12 identified juveniles within our crime scene. What can be done to hold parents accountable for the actions of their child? Questions that have been posed to the police department, to me as the chief of police. In order for me to hold a parent accountable, I must first let the parent know what's going on. If there's actions by that parent that allow that juvenile to remain undisciplined, then we can seek further action against that parent, once we've identified, made them aware of those problems. But sometimes, you know, it takes that initial interaction between the police and that parent in order to figure those underlying issues out. Misconceptions and misinformation. These are the things that have been posed over the past several weeks, as I, you know, since we've made the initial proposal for the curfew, again, at special meetings, as people who approach me as I'm out in the community. One of the things is, kids and their parents are going to be arrested. Well, I think there's a couple of things that would actually influence that. I'm not going to say that this curfew would never lead to an arrest or a detention, but like I said earlier, what do you think the parent would be charged with for a three-year-old who's walked out of the house unattended at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning? There are instances where we shall neglect where parents have been charged. But again, we have to apply a certain level of discretion and reasonableness to everything that we do as police officers. I think that should be the expectation, if we were to move forward, with an actual curfew ordinance. Legal processes for secured custody of a child, okay? I have spoken with the chief court counselor, Jason Hunter. This ordinance would not be an actual offense, where his office would seek a secured custody order for a child in violation of the ordinance. Typically, you know, it's hard to get a secure custody order for children that we find in stolen cars. It's difficult for us to get secure custody orders on children that we find with guns. So I don't imagine the process would get any easier for a violation of the city ordinance for a curfew violation. And that comes from the Department of Juvenile Justice, the chief court counselor, the discussions I've had with him. Curfews are unconstitutional. So what would be the constitutional challenge? The right to assemble? I'm not, you know, that, as I weigh out what the constitutionality of the ordinance is or against the ordinance, that is, you know, something that probably should be discussed. But as I stated, North Carolina General Statute outlines a city's ability to create an ordinance that would allow for a curfew to be established. In addition to that, there is appellate court through the federal court system. The Fourth Circuit has rendered opinion, reference to the legalities of a curfew that was stated in Charlottesville, Virginia. Was the importance of that, is that the state of North Carolina falls within that First Circuit, Fourth Circuit of Appeals. The county does not enforce their curfew. I can speak from personal experience that the county does enforce their curfew. Why? Because I was awoken from my sleep one night at about 12 or 1:00 in the morning, and told to come pick up my daughter, who was caught out loitering in the PVA of a food line with her other friends. I arrived on scene, and the deputy had all the group of kids over there in one corner, and he was checking their names and checking the identification of the people that were there to pick the children up. Very reasonable actions for a violation of that curfew ordinance. I can tell you some things that did and didn't happen that night. Things that did happen that night, I reevaluated my concepts of parenting. I purchased some cameras for my house, and I questioned my daughter every time that she was going somewhere, to ensure that she was telling me the truth, and I followed up with her. Things that didn't happen that night, she didn't get in a car with a drunk driver. She wasn't a victim of any type of assault. She wasn't involved in any felony activities. And thankful to that deputy who interacted before any of those things could occur, he called me and allowed me to come take care, custody, and control of my daughter. That is the purpose of an actual youth curfew ordinance. Minority communities will be disproportionately affected. Well, I will give you some evidence later on in this presentation, that'll indicate to you that minority communities are the most affected by the crimes that we are attempting to influence. Additional funding, programs, and policies and procedures are an option for this council, if they feel that there's more that could be actually done in addition to a curfew. Some of the research that I've done, this is a CDC report from 2020. If you look at the actual bottom, the graphics, the very first graphic states homicide is the leading cause of death for non-Hispanic, Black, or African-American youth. It says, "Each day, more than 1,000 youth are treated in emergency departments for physical assault-related injuries." And I know that the council's requested that some research should be done into the cost or effects of gun violence. According to this CDC report, the estimated cost of youth violence nationally is nearly $100 billion annually. In addition, we find in the report some recommendations that the CDC has as to how we could eliminate or reduce youth violence within our communities. As I look through this list, there's some pretty good ideas, okay? And when I spoke earlier about if there's any additional things after a curfew that council would like to approve, I would say this would probably be a good list to start from. You know, they talk about promoting family environments that support healthy development. You know, I don't know that that belongs with the police department. Talk about provide quality education in early life, again, something that wouldn't be provided by the police department. As we finish out that list, again, many great ideas to be conceptualized and maybe applied some way, shape, fashion, or form further down the road. So as the chief of police, for about the past three months, I've made it, I've made it my responsibility to get up out of bed at 12, 1, 2, 3:00 in the morning, when we have a serious shooting or a homicide. The information you see on this slide starts July 1, 2023, to September 14, which is the time that we started to gather this information and compile it and put it together. These are involved juvenile contacts by race and sex. 92% of the juveniles involved in a violent felony assault between July 1 and September 14 were Black. 14 of the 21 Black females involved were victims of crimes. Three of the four white females were victims of a crime. 18 of the 30 Black males involved were victims of a crime. Of the 18 Black male victims, five have been proven to be suspects in previous events of violence this year. Most of those were outside of that July 1 start date, when I started to gather this There's been a request for two years of juvenile data, as it relates to juvenile crime. So that indicates that in two years, there have been 8,188 total juvenile involvements listed. It is a very lengthy and extensive list. 54 of the entries into that database were Asians, that's less than 1%. 6,145 entries were Black, that accounts for 75%. 36 of the entries were Indian, less than 1%. 258 entries were listed as unknown, that's 3%. 1,680 entries were White, which accounts for 21%. And we add 12 entries into that list where race was not listed, again, less than 1%. Aggravated assaults, July 1 to September 14, 2023, by time of day. I thought this was relevant based on the recommendation of the curfew. If you look from the far left of the actual illustration, starts at 12:00 a.m. The recommendations for the curfew start at 12:00 a.m. Aggravated assaults and felony juvenile contacts, in a matter of 76 days, there were 24 incidents with 55 juvenile contacts made, in a total of 76 days. That's a rate of one violent felony incident every three days attributed to or involving a juvenile. What does this information tell us? It indicates that multiple juveniles are typically associated with one event. The bar graph represents the number of juvenile contacts, both suspect and victims. I know that I had a press conference several weeks ago, where, you know, I brought up some information concerning the victims. The victims tell the other half of the story. I got this too close. Tells the other half of the story. You know, we tend to concentrate on the suspect, but the victim played a role in that tragic incident as well. And generally, what we do, okay, is we list the person who was either shot or killed as the victim in that initial report. But there's been many investigations that have led us to know or uncover that maybe the report or the incident was a justified shooting, where our victim now becomes the suspect. A lot of these cases, as listed from July 1 to September 14, are too early in the stages of investigation to truly identify what role the individual played within the incident we're investigating. The highest hour for juvenile contact related to a violent felony is 11:00 p.m., with seven contacts in 76 days. That's 10% of the time at 11:00 p.m. 12:00 a.m., there was six documented. 1:00 a.m., there were six documented. 2:00 a.m., there were five documented. 3:00 a.m., there were five documented. 4:00 a.m., there were two. And then we have a long list of zeros. Five, six, seven, eight, nine. But outside of the 11:00 p.m. with the seven recorded incidents, the greatest majority of back-to-back hours with multiple incidents are from 12:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. Well within the hours outlined within the curfew ordinance that was proposed to city I've added the motor vehicle theft by time of day reported, okay? I know we've talked extensively about violent crime, but there's also been a history, a pattern, a trend of juvenile stealing motor vehicles, okay? Well, it's not as obvious as the time of day, but there are a lot that occur within that 12 to 3:00 a.m. timeframe, based on the time of day reported. So you see that there's a spike after the curfew hours at about 9:00 a.m., okay? Generally, what we see when cars are stolen is the person doesn't report it until they figure out that the car has actually been stolen. So what we try to do is find split times for last known secured, or put down the actual reporting time. This time here is by date and time reported. So if you see that 9:00 a.m., okay, that generally indicates that people have gotten up, are prepared to go to work, prepared to get on with their day, and have taken time to call the police and report their vehicle stolen. Now, this is as obvious as the violent crime, as it relates to the hours that encompass the curfew, but I think they're relevant for the conversation we're having today. North Carolina cities with current youth curfews. This was a quick cursory search of Google. I didn't have to spend a lot of time on this, but I was able to get up enough to fill the slide. I separated out the Cumberland County, North Carolina, and the Hope Mills, North Carolina, who have already curfews in place that directly mirror one another. And just a quick picture, again, from the July 1, and this is actually in less time than that, you know, one of the, we've had a task force to deal with our violent crime that has been out and operating on our streets in the early hours of the morning. And this is just a couple photos of the weapons that have been seized during that timeframe. These are the weapons that have been seized from juveniles. I think, you know, take notice of some of the guns out there. They have stickers of smiley faces applied to the magazines. They have an iPhone icon attached to an extended mag within a Glock. This is, these are the, this is the weaponry we're finding in possession of some of our youth out there today. So again, I'll cover the who, what, when, where, and why. The proposed curfew ordinance applies to juveniles less than 18 years of age, and potentially the parents or legal guardians of the juveniles in question. What, a curfew ordinance associated and associated penalties? The when, Monday through Friday, 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Saturday through Sunday, 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. For any child aged 16 or 17 years old. Monday through Sunday, 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. For anyone less than 16 years of age. And truancy hours on any school day, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. For anyone less than 18. Where, within the incorporated city limits of Fayetteville. Why, to address juvenile crime and safety, to address parental responsibility for their children. And again, for your viewing, there is the North Carolina General Statute 160A-198, which gives you authority to enact a youth ordinance curfew. To closing remarks, again, I've stated this during the initial presentation and proposal of a curfew. I know that this will not be the solution to all of our violent and youthful crimes. I know this is just a tool within the toolbox to address those issues. And again, at the end of the day, it's nothing more than a proposal to council to discuss whether it is right for the city of Fayetteville. But as we ask the question, what can we do to be proactive and get involved before a child pulls the trigger, becomes a felon, or becomes a victim, this is the proposal that I put before you. When we talk about what can we do to hold parents accountable for the actions of their children, this is the proposal I put before you. When asked, what can we do to curb violent crime across our city, again, this is the proposal that I put before you. Any questions?
Do, Chief, before we go to the questions, you passed out something for the council to see with some pictures. Are you able to share that with the listening audience as well?
So I didn't want to share the actual visuals. The pictures are sensitive in nature, but it's an array of probably about, I don't, I didn't even count the number of pictures in there, probably 15?
It was 20.
20? 20 pictures of youthful offenders from, within our community. Their identities have been blacked out, their faces have been, you know, blotted out, but it shows some of the social media content that we're seeing within our youthful offenders. And they're holding multiple guns. They hold guns nicer than the police department carries at times. They're holding firepower that would potentially penetrate, bulletproof vests. And that's the reality that the police officers who are out there every night patrolling go up against. And right now, even with those pictures... And right now, even with those pictures, all we can do is wait for one of those kids to commit a crime before we have the legal duty and obligation to intervene. We have to establish reasonable suspicion, probable cause of a crime before we're able to intervene.
So, question to you, two points. One, you're saying you can't show it, is it going to compromise something because you've got their identity blacked out? So what's the issue with that? I mean, is it, is it a, is it going to impact some other investigative ongoing procedures?
Okay. No, it's not part of current investigations, but they do contain images of juveniles even though their faces are blacked out. So, I would refer to Attorney Pulliam or attorney.
Well, I think as we talk about this, I want to make sure the public gets the information that we get. I mean, if it's passed out at a meeting, it's public. You've got the images blocked out. Do we have a legal issue with that? Madam, your turn.
Your honor, with the sensitivity of the juveniles, I mean, I'd like to err on the side of caution and not show the images, even though their faces are blacked out, there may be other identifying attributes.
Okay. All right. Now, I have a couple of council member questions, and then I'll come back and ask mine. I just wanted to make sure we had covered the full depth of the presentation. Yeah, so if the pictures were posted online and you were able to extract them online, isn't it already being publicized?
Considering that, you know, the government has obtained those, again, my position stands that I would like to keep those off the public domain, at least as it pertains to us providing them.
Okay. All right. All right. So I'll go to Councilmember Benevente and then here, and then I have some questions.
Just for folks who are curious, there are twenty pictures of young black men, some of them with guns, but I see a lot of white young men on Facebook posing with guns as well. It's just interesting to me when we find that to be offensive. My first question, Chief Braden, when you talk about such anecdotes as the child, infant child age, under five, walking around the street, do you currently have child endangerment laws that you can reference in order to approach that child?
So yes, if there was any charges that would be brought up against a parent, that would be what we, the basis we'd approach the child under, correct?
Now, if you see a young person out who is in distress, are there other means of approaching them and asking them if they need assistance? Is that impossible until you have a curfew?
So, make sure I understand your question. If someone was in distress, I think that there would be indication that they would want some type of help, which would authorize us to initiate that interaction.
You mentioned a court officer that you'd spoken with. What was the name of the gentleman again?
The chief court counselor.
Yeah, what was his name again?
Jason Hunter.
You mentioned Jason Hunter at the meeting last week. I then asked you if you'd reached out to anyone else at the courthouse, specifically the public defenders, the chief public defender, the district attorney, any other stakeholders at the courthouse. Have you been able to do that?
Yes, I have.
Who?
I've contacted the DA, Billy West, and I've contacted the director of DSS.
And what did they share with you as it relates to their interest in this curfew?
So, for the DA Billy West, he understands that it's a, that it won't be sought after for secure custody orders against these children, based on the way the ordinance would be enforced. So there was really no issue. If there was something that was to arise to the point where we did obtain secure custody, or a parent was charged based on our investigation, that it would be put forth for prosecution based on merit.
So you're saying that the DA said he has no issue with the curfew? Is that what you're claiming?
As I understand the question, yes.
Okay. Now, what did DSS have to share with you?
That they were going to reach out and consult with the county manager.
So, they did not affirm their interest in a curfew?
No, they did not.
Okay. Had you get a chance to review the ACLU letter?
Yes, I have.
When they talked about the four different reasons that it would have constitutional issues not to include children's right to assemble, why didn't you include those four in your presentation?
Well, I would refer to Attorney Pulliam.
Attorney Pulliam?
To address the constitutionality of an actual ordinance.
I understand that you pulled different times that the ACLU has taken curfews to court and had them overturned, and it was more often they were overturned than not. Was that something that you didn't advise the chief to include in his presentation, or are we trying to hide that fact?
The chief wanted to be responsive, but one of the things that we really do try to do is make sure that we coordinate with the city attorney's office. And for issues about constitutionality of ordinances particularly potentially being challenged, those questions were sent to City Attorney Pulliam, and I think she had an opportunity to review those, and she is prepared to share hers, but it was not part of the chief's presentation that you see tonight because of that reason.
I guess I'm just concerned because the chief mentioned only one instance where it was permitted, then said he doesn't understand what could possibly be the constitutional issues when we had it spelled out for us, and we've had our city attorney look into the many instances where it's been overturned, and yet we have a chief here that is presenting to us a very cherry-picked answer for that particular issue. And we're going to get into more of the cherry picking that was done on some of this data. Chief Braden, I asked you a week ago-
So if I could respond, first and foremost-
Why you didn't include those unconstitutional issues?
We did talk about the constitutionality of the Fourth Circuit's opinion as-
Right, the one that fit your outcome that you want.
The one that we are governed by under our appellate-
Chief, again, I think the question is better directed to City Attorney Pulliam, who's ready, prepared to answer your question.
And council, just to make sure that we all have a chance to ask questions, we'll do multiple rounds.
I just have one final question after this, if Attorney Pulliam didn't want to speak
Can you repeat your question, please?
You sent us a review of a number of times the ACLU has taken issues of curfews to court and had them overturned for constitutional issues. They noted constitutional issues that are similar. I feel as though the chief cherry picked the one where it didn't and ignored the other eight. Can you explain to me why you allowed him to do that?
Well, first, I don't supervise the chief.
Somebody needs to.
But secondly, we do have Attorney Joshua Hall, who worked on this as well as I did, but the main reason I believe that happened is because the case that chief mentioned is the only case that would be binding on North Carolina, while the others are just persuasive.
And so, anything that doesn't fit what he wanted, understood. Okay, thank you. The last question I'll have for you, chief. At our last meeting, I asked very specifically for data related to the past two years, not in the number of instances, but when they occurred, because that's relevant to a curfew. You didn't give me that. Is there a reason why?
I believe that I did.
No, sir. You totaled them in order to show that one demographic has higher numbers than the others. But what I asked specifically, because this is curfew related to time, was where they fell on a timeline.
And that information is contained within the Excel worksheet that you were provided.
It was not an Excel worksheet, sir. It was a PDF that we couldn't manipulate, and we never got any Excel sheet after that. So, was there a reason why you didn't provide it during your presentation?
So I did have the two-year cumulative data that was in there.
But it was not based on a timeline.
Okay. If you didn't get a copy of that, I apologize, but we did have that prepared for you based on your request.
You included a bunch of zero-zero years.
Under what slide?
No, no. You sent a PDF, and you flooded it with a bunch of instances that didn't include ages. So we weren't able to exclude those, and we never got the follow-up where you didn't try to sort of flood us with an overabundance of data so they couldn't be analyzed. Is there a reason also why you only looked at one week of time when you did the timeline on the slideshow?
It's not one week of time, it's actually two and a half months, total of seventy-six days.
Are you talking about the aggravated assaults?
Correct.
Why didn't we get the entire year?
Because, as I mentioned, that's the point in time where I started coming out to every shooting call and every shooting incident. I can tell you about just about every one that occurred within this timeframe.
Yeah, so I think we need to get a lot more data on this, because it does seem like when you feel like it, it's only two weeks of time. Sometimes it's six months of time, and it really does feel like you're cherry picking data to get to a very specific outcome. We need all of the data so that we can analyze it, because at this point, it's very difficult to trust that you're not just trying to fight for a very particular outcome, not giving us the opportunity to actually review this information, giving the people an opportunity to review this information, because you're just dead set on having a reason to stop and frisk people in this city.
All right, councilman. All right. So, so council, as we work through this, and we ask our questions, we're going to limit each round per council member to five minutes. We'll do multiple rounds. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. If we ask questions, let's keep it respectful and allow them to answer the questions as we can work through, you know, a meaningful outcome here. All right, so councilmember here.
Thank you, mayor. Chief, you stated that there are several occasions when FPD may be traveling throughout our city, and they'll see some younger folk that are outside. Young age, I think you said, under the age of thirteen and down, or fourteen and down. Whenever you see this happen, what is done? And can you give me some percentage of how often something, a stop like that, may occur?
Let's take, for instance, the most recent case. We had a three-year-old that was found wandering the streets. By all means, the police department got out with that three-year-old, and what was it about? How long did we spend? So about four or five hours we spent with that three-year-old before we were able to contact or identify the mother. Rate of occurrence for those kinds of incidents? I know that one happened about two weeks ago. I can't speak to, you know, the ones that occurred before that, it'd have to be some of my research. But I know of several cases throughout the years where we've had, we found infant-age children wandering around.
Yeah, well, it was just, I was just curious that if this is something that's already within the authority of our police department, or at least a part of what they do. If they see, let me finish, chief. If they do see something like this, a young child or a young person, the same thing that you're saying, they will probably be enforcing more if there's a curfew, I'm asking, how often do you think we do this now, and it's not a curfew?
I can tell you this, if there's an infant child walking around, it's obvious. But when we have groups of individuals walking around, okay, and I think that's what I'm asking for, is some, an ordinance to help me identify the ability to get out. Back home. As I spoke earlier, you know, what age do I get credit for looking out for the best interests of the child? When does that transfer over to, I'm trying to violate that individual's rights? You know, I think this ordinance would give a lot of clarification to that issue of, is that age fourteen? You know, that is an option for council. If they want to sit there and amend the actual age group, that is possible to do. But realistically, you know, I don't, I can't define that moment in time, that specific age, where it transfers from the police are stopping and looking out for the best interests of the child, to the police are potentially violating that child's rights.
Okay. Follow-up question. Let's say the curfew is in place, okay, for conversation tonight. If you could, sort of tell me what that stop might look like? Okay, you see, we have the curfew in place, you see the folk that fit the curfew period, now what?
So, there'd be interaction with the officers. Well, they would explain to them why they were stopping them that evening, okay? Just like with any traffic stop, you know, we identify who we are, why we're there, and what our intended purpose is. So they would probably indicate that they believe that ordinance of the juvenile curfew was in violation. They would probably identify the specific individuals they believed to be in violation. They would ask them, you know, what their name is, what their date of birth is, and potentially contact their parents. And like I said earlier, during the illustration I gave, the parents would have to get up, come and pick their children, take care, custody, control of their children. We'd identify who those parents were, and make sure that we document it, okay? Who was taking care, custody, and control of that child? Now, that's when the potential opportunity of, hey, does this kid do this more than once? Are they an undisciplined juvenile? That conversation with the parent will help clarify some of those things. That conversation with that child may indicate that, okay, there is neglect going on within that home, where we may have to make the referral to a DSS or something of that nature, or potentially take out charges. So again, once that initial contact is made, you know, it could go as simple as the parent comes and picks up their child, and that's it. Two, you know, we identify some underlying condition where an actual charge may come from that interaction.
Okay, yes, sir. Now, for my last question, is that something that's done right there on the spot? Or is the juvenile picked up and taken, and all those questions are asked of him or her?
So, yes, that would happen right there on the spot unless we were unable to contact a parent, okay? Then we would have to, more than likely, more, the juvenile would probably be taken to our soft room, okay? Have a seat on the couch until we're able to identify who that juvenile could be released to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Chief, I had a couple of questions. One, so, the issue that we have in examples used, and the pictures that we've seen, are guns, an overabundance of very dangerous guns in the hands of young people. So the pictures that you have, you were able to identify enough to know the age of the people that are in the pictures? How did you know they were minors? You spoke to that. You've concluded and verified that they are all under the age of eighteen. What's the legal age to own a firearm in North Carolina?
For a rifle or a shotgun, it'd be eighteen, and for a handgun, twenty-one.
Okay, so they, more than likely, fit into that. Have you made contact with those kids or their parents to retrieve those weapons that were posted online?
So, again, if we're talking about initiating an investigation, I'm bound by the rules of probable cause, reasonable suspicion, and have to articulate those facts before I have the ability to actually seize those guns.
So probable cause and reasonable suspicion is not seeing the pictures with them in their hand online?
No, it's not.
What's the barrier for that? Is that the threshold that we use? So, basically, you were able to see what they had and see and verify their age, but you're saying that you didn't have-
So I got to be able to verify that that weapon is actually a fully functioning, real weapon, okay? We live in a time where there are a lot of airsoft guns.
Right. But isn't that what your investigation yields? You just said probable cause, right? So if you stop a car and you think there's something in it, and you have-
So, understand there's a difference between conducting a legal traffic stop based on probable cause and seeing a picture. That doesn't automatically give me probable cause to go stop, question, or intervene at that point.
Okay.
So there's a lot more. The mere picture is just the start of knowing what was going on with that. You know, we still have to work towards probable cause and work those investigations.
Okay. The purpose of the ordinance, the first line reads, "The ordinance is intended to reinforce and promote the role of the parent in raising and guiding children." Have we connected with the other aspect of that? So, right now, we're talking about the curfew, the enforcement part. So the other things that support the role of raising and guiding, and promoting better parenting skills, have we connected with some of the other agencies that we partner with, social services and so forth, to aid in that part of it? We're talking about the enforcement side, how about the aiding and assisting part of it? Has there been any interaction between your office and any partner agencies that do this kind of work?
So, yes, we hosted a youth crime summit, was it last week? At the PD, two weeks ago, at the PD. We had people from the school system, we had individuals from DSS, we had individuals from the Department of Corrections, Juvenile Justice. There was probably about twenty people in the room. Uh, there was probably about 20 people at the, in the room. Uh, we talked about ways to interact. They'd, uh, and, and I would, I would invite Assistant Chief Berg up. She was in the room and part of the actual conversation that went on that day. But there were, uh, indications of things that we could do within our potentially school system or within our rec centers as it relates to tutoring, mentoring, things of that nature. Uh, we have a, a 60-day return meeting, you know, with actual items that we take away to move towards those. There was, uh, also the comment of, what was it, in the school system, just a, a need a, need a friend day?
Yeah, so, um, we had people from everywhere. And I know the school system wanted us to, um, help them with a program, Need a Friend, where if we got out with a juvenile at night, um, during the curfew hours or no curfew hours, even when we get out with them now, to give that, send a report over probably to the SRO to let them know. Um, you know, we're very confined about who we can release juvenile information to. So, um, it, they asked us if we could just say, hey, the child was present during a homicide or, um, a rob, whatever it was, they may need a friend.
I think it was a day of care or a day of-
Something similar to that. And then we also reached out to, um, Dr. Green was there from the Health Department. And they have a program, Connect Care, uh, where they're going to be reaching out to families, um, offering them different services that DSS and the Health Department can provide to them. So we're trying, we're in a trial program right now. Because we can't release a juvenile's names, um, it's similar to what we do with the Phoenix Center with the domestic violence victims. We can release parent names. We can release the adults' names if we run into children that we think can be afforded some resources by DSS or the Health Department. Uh, so far, we've sent a few reports over. We're two weeks in. Um, so I don't have feedback with you. So there were several different conversations talking about how we can work with our partnering agencies to help the juveniles that we do come across.
So we didn't have the nonprofits there who, who are specializing in at-risk youth mitigation?
We had, I think-
Yes, so, uh, the Prove Project was present for that. And again, I don't control any of these entities, but we brought them to our table so we could start that conversation and see what we could initiate through those individuals.
Okay. So, you know, I've got a meeting tomorrow with about five local partner agencies. I think that the problem is if, if this is passed and enforced and we don't have that connective part, you can't release names to improve the situation. How do you anticipate this helping the situation?
So releasing the names of the parents?
So if you have a kid that violates this past weekend-
Right.
And you pick him up?
Mm-hmm.
You can't release the name of the child-
Right.
But you're saying you can refer the parent-
I can refer the parents.
To a partner agency, but we haven't, we haven't lined that up, right?
Right, we had some partner agencies there. I know that they reached out to them. These are just the ones that showed up. So I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to any agency that'd be willing to work with the parents.
That I have asked for a meeting that we'll do.
That would be great.
I'll keep you posted. Let me finish, uh, because my, my time is running out as well. So the businesses, the businesses, uh, responsibility. In this ordinance, so two things I have an issue with. One is the, the difference between a juvenile and a minor. Um, to, to tell if someone is 17 or 18 is a little tougher to me than tell if they're 14 or 15. So the businesses that you have in here is a component about business responsibility. Speak to that. I didn't hear much about that from you. Uh, reference to, well, at least Charlotte's ordinance had it. Where, well, I think yours, your proposal did as well, that businesses would not have a, uh, public, public place with many businesses. But what are the, what are the businesses' responsibility who make money off of these, this demographic? What is their responsibility? And what are the consequences for their violation?
So, uh, so that is more tuned to the people that are allowing, basically contributing to the delinquency of a minor. That would be the appropriate charge for anything that is associated to that. If I'm allowing a juvenile to enter, remain upon the property, knowing that they are a juvenile and are in violation of the ordinance, that is, is defined as that contributing to the delinquency. So that would be the business's responsibility to ensure that they didn't provide a safe haven for children or juveniles to come and commit that offense of delinquency.
All right, final question. The percentage of, of the crimes that were committed, um, violent crimes and aggravated assaults during those hours that you showed, what percentage did the juveniles represent?
So, uh-
Of total? So if you had all aggravated assaults, the examples you gave us, what percentage were committed by juveniles?
So you were referring to the aggravated assault felony juvenile contacts?
So let's pull up the same stat you had a moment ago.
I had the, the breakdown of the hours a day and the number of incidents?
Yeah, you had total number of incidents from this date to that date.
So a total of 24 incidents with 55 juvenile contacts and a total of 76 days.
Those were just the ones that pertained to everybody 17 and under, right?
Yes.
18 and under. So how many total during this period?
There was a total of 24 incidents in 24-
No, no, no. Total committed by any, any age demographic?
Again, I didn't include that. I'd have to go back and research that data, you know?
Well, I think during your crime report, you, you have that, I'm sure. That it says from July 1 to this date, there were a total of X amount of incidents committed. And then we can see what percentage of it this spoke to was where I was going. So that information you can get pretty quickly, I'm sure?
Well, by, by tomorrow sometime, yes.
Well, it was in your, it was in your quarterly report, I'm sure, right?
Not this July 1 to September 14th. That was comparable data to what you're asking for that I presented tonight.
All right, all right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief, thank you much for the, uh, presentation. Thank you much for the data. Uh, it is, uh, good that we had that information. It serves its purpose. Uh, but I'd like to talk about something that I have two concerns about. And one was the, I was talking to an individual prior to us coming on. She had a question, and I want to make sure I get clarity. But I want to talk about something that we talked about over the weekend at the function that we was located at. And this hitting on what the mayor was saying about, uh, uh, agencies helping us and how we're going to need the county's help to enforce some of this policy. Can you give the audience a brief description of what we talked about when we was referring to DSS and the shooting over the weekend?
Well, all I can say is that there was, we attempted to make contact with DSS to assist us on that and, uh, we were advised to make our referral once the report was completed.
So my question is, if we have a juvenile and you can't locate the parents and DSS doesn't respond, what do we do?
Well, this was a situation where the, the kids were not in any type of custody. They weren't associated with any type of crime. Uh, we did the best job that we could.
You did great.
We brought detectives in that attempted to hunt down, track down, uh, known relatives within the state of North Carolina. Uh, we had to communicate and talk with blood relatives who were outside of the state that were unable to catch a flight to get into the state within 24 hours. We were able to obtain, uh, consent from those blood relatives on people that were located within the state that we could turn those juveniles over to.
Well, I just wanted to make it clear to the audience that the police department is going to do all they can to make sure that the children are safe and that they do contact the, uh, appropriate guardians if they can't locate the parents. Number two is my question of truancy. Uh, the individual was speaking of homeschooling. And if the truancy starts from 4:30 to, I can't remember the, the other time.
7:30 to 4:30.
Right. What do they? What if they were stopped if they were just doing a physical activity? A group of kids that were being homeschooled?
So a-again, based on the proposal, the way it is written, then that, that would constitute a violation. But, but technically, you know, Council can amend that, the proposal to fit the needs of the city. So, but, but technically, yes, it would be a violation uh, if they were potentially supposed to be at homeschooled or homeschooled to be out and, and in violation.
But they were doing a homeschool activity is what I'm saying.
Well, then it would fall under one of the 11 exceptions that, that relates to a school function or activity.
So they would need, they waiver from the department as it's written or no?
So that, and again, that would be something where we'd contact a parent. You know where your child is at. Yes, they are supposed to be here doing this, this event based on the, their homeschooling event.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chief. Um, do we know how many juveniles total there are in the city? Not necessarily, no.
I don't have that information really.
Okay, that's fine. Do we know if, and I think the mayor asked this, but I'm going to ask it just in case I wasn't tracking, um, completely. Do we know if the, 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 the type of crime that we are seeing that is giving us more concern is the higher percentage within the juveniles or the higher percentage within adults?
So if we're talking about violent offenses such as felony aggravated assaults, yes, I would agree that there's probably more, uh, percentage higher for the adult offenders.
Okay. Now, are we seeing where there are a mix? Where there are crimes of adult and juvenile?
Yes. And, and that would be where it would be appropriate if we were to stop a juvenile in violation of the curfew and they were had a, an adult 19, 20, 21-year-old person with them, okay? As they were committing other crimes or in that violation for that contributing to the delinquency of that minor.
Okay. For our unhoused community, where do they fall in this conversation?
So, again, I don't have the actual numbers of unhoused children. But, again, we talk about discretion and reasonableness. I think that is a conversation that should be encountered that, that has to be taken seriously by those officers and those supervisors as to the appropriate way to handle that.
And so at, pretty much at the officer's discretion?
So, yes, based on, okay, we can't just blanket cover a homeless community. We could have a homeless community where there's a juvenile who is committing crimes. Again, I think to lump everybody into that same, uh, group is, is not a fair assumption at this point in time. We have to look at the totality of the circumstances and make a reasonable decision based on what we're seeing in that specific incident.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benevente, second round. If there's a 19-year-old Walmart parking lot accompanied by two 17-year-olds and you approach them, there's an exception in this ordinance that says that if they have the permission of the parent, that the juveniles have permission of the parent to be with the 19-year-old, that you guys proceed no further. If you aren't able to get in touch with the parent to confirm that, are you going to take those two 17-year-olds away?
And what do you mean by take them away?
You said you're, you said you're going to put them in a soft room somewhere?
So if there's an unreasonable amount of time that it takes for us to identify the parents and, and, and them having that permission to do those things, that, that, yes.
They say that they're related. There's no way to confirm that. Again, you're always going to err on the side of taking the juveniles away?
Okay, again, confirm what you're talking about, taking away.
Putting into one of your vehicles and removing from the Walmart premises?
If we are unable to find a, an adult to take care, custody, and control of that, then yes.
The 19-year-old being that adult?
So, and again, what is the relation of this 19-year-old? And do we, have we confirmed that they do have the parental consent to be with that 19-year-old?
They're claiming they do. You have no confirmation.
Well, then I would need some confirmation before I turn a juvenile over to and, and what you're describing as an adult potential offender. Yes.
Have you reviewed any of the, um, work that's come out of the Organizing Against Racism Group, particularly Judge Weeks's commentary on the young juveniles that he's encountered and his concerns with this curfew?
Not recently, no.
Have you, um, had a discussion with DSS specifically about their interest in this curfew or any limitations that they might have?
Yes, that was already been asked.
What were the limitations again? Or were there concerns, if any?
They said they would confer with the, uh, the county manager.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Ingram, you had second round.
Sorry, I just had a clarifying question to, and Councilmember Benevente, please correct me if I'm wrong if this is what you just asked. You asked if the DSS director, you asked if the DSS director had spoken with the chief? Is that what I heard?
A week ago, we asked for our chief, our staff, to reach out to these different departments.
Who did you say that said that they would talk to the county manager?
The director of DSS.
Okay, so this, so earlier in the conversation, did you not say that the county, it has enforced their ordinance?
Correct.
But you're, you're going off of one experience that you had personally that could have been about loitering and not necessarily curfew.
Councilmember Benevente, she has the floor.
So I think my, my, I think my, my, my thought process here with this is if the county has a record of enforcing, would not, there have been some record of, uh, collaboration or information from their partners like DSS when they prepared to reinforce their own?
So again, we're talking, we're talking about a worst-case scenario here where we have an uncooperative juvenile who's not giving us information where we can contact a parent. Or we're given information and through that information, we're unable to make contact with that parent. And we're in a situation now where I've had care, custody, and control of that juvenile for an extended period of time. And since the city of Fayetteville, the police department is not authorized to, to house or, or, or like, I guess the term law is, we have no secure custody order on a child. We have no other options than it would be turned over to a DSS, referred to DSS to help assist in locating a safe and secure environment to release that child to.
All right, uh, Councilmember Benevente.
Have you spoken with the sheriff's department about any record of enforcement ever?
Yes, I have.
And he said that he has?
Yes. They do training, uh, we, uh, specifically legal has talked to the legal department with the county and they confirmed that, yes, they train their deputies on the ordinance.
But not, not trained on the ordinance? Have they ever enforced the ordinance? And by that, I mean, have they ever approached a young person and said, you are in violation of this curfew? You are now being taken into their custody. Has that ever occurred?
If you're asking for a specific incident that they could, no, they, I've had discussions and they do enforce their curfew.
No, no, sir. You, you're, you're jumping around my question. I'm not saying do they train their sheriffs to, deputies. I'm not saying that they know how to enforce it. I'm saying have they actually approached a child ever?
Yes, I told you my specific experience. And I spoke with the chief deputy, and yes, they do enforce their curfew. I don't know any other way to answer that question.
I, I guess, having spoken to county commissioners, who've spoken to their county manager, who've spoken to the sheriff, and they say otherwise, I tend to trust them over the position that you just given.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, thank you for the, the presentation. Um, although I support a curfew, um, I think the youth should be in at a decent time. My husband have a curfew. You know, um, but, um, but on a serious note, um, my concerns are, but my concerns are, um, the placement for the youth. Um, I know I mentioned in a previous meeting, um, I would rather see kids sitting in a hallway at DSS rather than parents having to bury their children or kids getting, you know, in harm's way. However, I think that there needs to be a MOU or a resolution from the agencies, um, this, even down to the school system, Department of Social Service, where we can collaborate. Because if, I feel like we don't have the answers. Yes, if we put the curfew in place, okay, from there, what take place? Um, we can't put that all on a chief to babysit our children, but we need something else in place once the children are, or the youth are, um, approached. So until then, it just doesn't sit well with me because there's still a lot of unanswered, unanswered questions. So I just wanted to say that. So I'm hoping moving forward, um, the county, the, um, the county manager, um, city manager, and, you know, everybody comes to the table and figure it out because it don't just fall on the city. This is a, a community effort. And everybody is being, um, experiencing this together. And we do want to keep our city safe, but how do we do that? And the only way to do that is if we bring other agencies, partners in as well as the community to help with this. So thank you.
Thank you. Great remarks. Uh, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I, I, I will say this. Um, I do not believe that anybody under 18 needs to be outside at 1 o'clock, after 1 o'clock or after 12 o'clock. And nobody's going to- And nobody's going to change my mind on that. I, I just, as a mom, I just cannot wrap my head around it. The other thing is, but I do understand the concerns and I want people to understand that. I do understand the concerns. The one that I have the issue with that everybody's probably thinking that, I can't believe this, what she has the issue with, is the truancy, is the hours during the day. You know, this curfew was done just like the county's curfew was. I mean, we, we, we collaborated and we just, my understanding is we copied and pasted and did their exact curfew. So, back in nineteen ninety-eight, there wasn't a lot of homeschooling. There wasn't a lot of kids getting out of school early. And, you know, I graduated quite a bit before that. And, you know, we were hiding. If, you know, we were in our cars, we thought everybody was looking at us when we were skipping school. So, I mean, it's a whole different ballgame now. These kids are getting out at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, going to work. So I think we need some work on that. But what I will say is, number one, you told the story about your daughter. I'm going to make you feel good because I had one that was, I would call him a runner. He could go off the balcony. He could get down. But the most impressive thing is, he wouldn't walk in the door. He'd climb back up the balcony to get back in. So, you know, a curfew would have been nice. If I would have known about that, I could have threatened him. But the one thing that I will say is, as a community, and we sat here and talked about this, we are bringing up a situation and everybody is realizing that the city cannot do it by themselves and the police cannot do it by themselves. I will tell you, a week out, the last, the last Tuesday, I walked into the valor awards. I had three people in leadership, not elected officials, but people that can help us that came up and said, we're going to get involved. We're, we are going to get involved and we're going to help with this. So, as mad as everybody is, and they like it or they don't like it, it is a positive thing that we are having the conversation because people are coming to the table. And I think as a community and as a county, all of us are going to come together and fix this. But we all have to stay focused and not beat each other up because we can do this. But if we sit there and point fingers at each other, it's never going to work. So we need to help our police officers out and take care of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, ma'am. Chief, and council, just to recap some of the concerns that I heard. One, partner agencies, good comments, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. I think that's critical because if you don't have a what happens when plan, you know, the fact that we didn't, I don't think we've extended the invitation to enough partner agencies who see who is in this space and, and some of the ideas and, and opinions they have of it. I think we, it's critical. And also knowing DSS, if, if this increases the number of calls that you make to DSS because of the curfew being enforced, how does that weigh in on their resources if they didn't show the other night? Or, or at what timeline do you say that I'm going to move from side of the road to a soft room? I mean, I think it's just a lot of unanswered questions with that. Two is, this is for the attorney. You and I talked extensively, the county already has an existing curfew. Hope Mills has a curfew. Now, I know you were telling me that the city had to have its own in order for the counties to apply. So, chief, the question for you is, when that incident happened with your daughter, were you within the city or outside the city?
I was outside the city.
All right. And then the truancy piece. We don't regulate schools in any respect. So you're telling me that the county curfew does not apply to kids who are skipping school within the city limits of Fayetteville?
Mayor, I didn't address that particular question, but I believe with truancy, it's about the school, about not being in school. It's about the attendance. Whereas with, with these, this ordinance, it's about them not being in school. So I think there's a difference.
Well, I understand that. But you've got a section in here that specifically speaks to truancy violations. So what I'm saying now with the current ordinance, because we got Cumberland County schools, are you saying that their ordinance applies in the city? Or one aspect applies or it doesn't apply? I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah, there, there are two separate issues, Mayor. So one is about you being in school and the other one is about you not being in school, if that makes any sense. So for truancy, you're, you're getting penalized for skipping school or being unexcused from school. The ordinance speaks to that simply because of the days, the time of the day. So, I mean, you can simply strike that completely if you don't like that in the ordinance. Or you can adjust those hours if you want. It's really just about trying to provide a mechanism that would, you know, give them some authority within the daytime hours where they should be in school and they're not.
Then, okay.
Just strike it. Sorry if you don't like it.
Yeah. Well, I definitely have heartburn on that part. The, the other part is the age. It's a little tougher, chief, for you to enforce a curfew. Let's say you see some, one of your officers see a juvenile driving a car. He looks sixteen, seventeen. It's after hours. Is that probable cause to stop him?
No. There, there's separate issues. As I spoke earlier, to stop a car, I need probable cause of a motor vehicle violation. Okay? So, or, or another crime. So, you know, they're not mutually inclusive events where I have the opportunity to do those two things, just one because I did the other.
So the curfew will not help or initiate contact if they see juveniles in a stolen car? You used that as an example. Okay? So.
So, again.
With the commission of a crime, you can stop someone regardless of what age they are, right? You run a tag, the car stolen, you can pull in behind it?
Correct.
But if you see a group of juveniles with the implementation of this curfew, are you saying your officers cannot use that as a basis to pull them over?
Not a simple mere observation and assumption of an age. No.
So, the difference with me walking down the street, how does that apply? The mere assumption of my age?
Well, because, number one, there's, there's, there has to be that basis for the actual stop of a motor vehicle. I have to have that reasonable suspicion probable cause. Okay? The curfew ordinance, and, and contrary to popular belief, it's hard to tell how old somebody is, let alone the race or the sex of the individual who's driving a car.
No, no, I believe that, yes.
So, 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 you know, again, that is a separate and independent observation that leads to the stop of that car. When you asked earlier about how are we getting the individuals off the streets of the ones we've arrested with the guns that were presented, that was because we were catching them in stolen motor vehicles. When they jumped and ran, we were able to catch them. And, 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 and I can, I can attest to this. Not a single person that has jumped, ran from a stolen motor vehicle and we've recovered a gun from has been turned over to DSS. I don't know why the presumption is that if we have some kind of curfew ordinance, that everybody is going to that, that secure custody side of the house.
Well, well, let me clear it up. Because this, this curfew says that you're going to stop people based on age regardless of whether they are jumping out of a car, running with a stolen gun or not. That's why DSS is in the conversation. But help me reconcile this. So a part of this ordinance says public place means specifically, streets, side, not limited to, streets, sidewalks, highways, alleys, right-of-ways, public vehicular areas and parking lots, transportation facilities, theaters, restaurants, bowling alleys, schools and school grounds, and places of business. So doesn't that include the road? How are they not going to enforce that if that language is in here?
So, again, I'd have to articulate that, that, that person who's driving, I'd have to have significant observations. Now, if I pull up next to a car and I look across and I can't see the head above the steering wheel of the person driving that car, I can probably assume they're, they're, they're very young. But realistically, just looking at somebody.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
But realistically, you know, to make an assumption of a driver's age simply by an observation, that is not something that we do to enforce the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Ingram. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get McNair and then Ingram since she hasn't spoken.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your report tonight. However, I am a person of clarity and I don't feel that we have clarity on tonight, even with all that's been said. However, I feel that we need to have a conversation, all of us, once again, because we're just going back and forth and nothing is being resolved here.
So I agree. Again, this was a proposal that was put before council that was based on the county ordinance. Again, if there are proposals, there are amendments, there are changes. Those are discussions that the council can have and make those recommendations of staff to come back with different proposals.
Okay. But until then, I don't feel that I can support, even though I had seventeen of my constituents to agree with it at the time you met with us at our community meeting. But still, we ask that you bring clarity to all the questions and we would actually agree a little bit more towards what you were proposing here with this, uh, curfew.
So I agree. And I think at this point, is, is, you have to make clear what you would like to see added, taken away, what amendments you would like to see to the ordinance as it was proposed.
Okay. They actually stated some things, but.
Well, I'm, I'm going to recap that for council and then we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Councilmember.
I, I just wanted to, to say that for the ones that are actually rooting for this curfew. It was quite a few and there's quite a few that are, are not. So, we are kind of like stuck in the middle here. And we need to come to a resolution. How are we going to do that? I don't know.
All right. We'll get there. All right. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would say that, based off of what I'm hearing, this is not what I was preparing to say, but I'm going to say this before I get to what I want, what I am going to say. Based off of what I'm hearing, typically how if, if this body is still interested in moving forward with the curfew and we've not, not comfortable with what is being heard, then probably send whatever concerns to the attorney. But from where I'm standing right now, about two, three years ago, the city and the county went through a rebranding effort. And we came out with it to be understood as the Can Do Carolina. And all the partners that are listed in it are called the Can Do Partners. And one of the things that stand out for me, as especially as we are home to, you know, Fort Liberty, is that we find a way, we care for one another, we protect the world, and we always go further. Looking at the we protect the world, that does not sit well with me if we cannot protect our children or our community. Okay? So, what I would like to see, if this body is interested, is that we actually pull in our Can Do Partners. We set a meeting date with the school board and the county and maybe the sheriff. And then we all, within our own realms, figure out what we can do in an innovative way that would help with what we are seeing in our communities. We are hearing in a very divided way, some are for the curfew and some are for not. And you are responding with what you were asked. It's only a proposal. And so thank you for responding with what you were asked. But I think now the ball is kind of in our, in our court for us to say, what do we need to do now if we are not going to move forward with the curfew? And I am of the mindset that we need to pull in our Can Do Partners to all figure out how can we work within our own realms to help stop whatever we're seeing. And it all may not stop, but we can at least come together to make a concerted effort. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well said. Council, I just want to kind of recap the concerns and let me know if we're missing any. One, I heard the, the truancy piece. I certainly have, have an issue with that. Any other councilmembers would like that revised or, or removed or taken another look at? All right. Heard about bringing in the DSS and other community partners. Certainly support that. Is there consensus to have some of that conversation? Yes. I haven't spoken. All right. Councilmember, I didn't, she didn't, let me know you had your hand up. Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the comments for everyone. I especially want to thank Chief Braden and his team for all of their hard work. I, I really like the idea of if the county commissioners will meet with us and the county school board members, all that matters. We'd need a facilitator or some type of moderator. But I think we're moving in the right direction and, but whenever we're ready to make a motion, I'm willing to either second it or vote for it to get this process moving so that we can then have a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Proti. Council, before I go to the, to the other speakers that, that have asked, age limit, you know, certainly Charlotte has a fifteen and under. I think the age limit here is seventeen and under. Was there any, any, uh, the age, I'm not sure. Oh. What's, do you under the legal age that someone can stay at home alone is what she asked?
Don't tell nobody else.
Um, no. Recently, and I, I don't know if we need, Mr. Hall to answer this, but I know recently in the conversation with the county, I believe they, they declined to provide a specific age and said it was a case-by-case basis for each child. There's no.
So there's no statute? They says that?
No.
It's unbelievable. All right, all right. So, attorney, you had something to ask, sir?
Mayor, council, I was just going to say I would somewhat agree. They typically will leave it to the parents to make that determination. However, they kind of have set a threshold that it's kind of presumed that if you're twelve and older, that you typically can stay at home by yourself. But that's not a hard, fast rule. It all would just depend. But twelve is kind of generally that age. That's recommended.
All right. So, so, council, is there any, any desire to have, have the age limit reviewed to mirror some of the other municipalities? You listed a slew of municipalities, but I know Charlotte was pretty much the larger one that I saw out of that, that had it at fifteen, according to the ordinance that I'm, I'm looking at now.
Yes. And I, and Greensboro had a temporary ordinance based on the, the problem. I, I believe, how long did the Greensboro ordinance run? Six months? Sixty days. Sixty days.
What, what, what was the, I, I'll reach out to Mayor Vaughn and find out. Was it set up for a specific reason, like a state of emergency or something?
Similar to that. It was, I believe, back in two thousand and thirteen. There was approximately four hundred teen melee in their downtown district. And based on that, they incorporated approximately a sixty-day. I did not see where they had updated, so I'm just assuming after that sixty-day it had just lapsed.
Okay. All right. All right, council, any other, any other issues, items that, so let me go to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Benavente.
Well, it was just about an issue.
Well, huh. Okay. All right.
The age that they can stay at home, let's talk about the hundred-dollar fine now. Because now I have a problem with the parents being responsible if the child get caught out of the house when he knew he wasn't supposed to be out of the house. When and how often will we issue that hundred-dollar fine?
And that's mess that we don't need to be putting struggling families through.
So, again, it would be.
That, that the chief explained.
Hold on. Again, it would be dependent on the outcome of that actual interaction. Okay? We talked first and foremost about discretion and reasonableness. Okay? If a parent was to be fined, there would have to be the, the charge, which would suggest that, that we allowed that child, they had some bearing as to how that child became delinquent. And I think that would be relevant to the case at hand.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Benavente, before I go to Hundra.
Right. It was, this is not a comment. This is just to add to the list. I, I sent two emails, one asking about the murder, attempted murder and assault charges this year, because ABC eleven reported that a hundred and thirty of them related to juveniles. I sent that back in September and I've yet to get any response from the city staff or the chief of police about that. I got a bunch of PDF documents, not Excel, but PDF documents that are not searchable like Excel, just PDF documents about every crime possible. And the only things that were broken down were car thefts, which I never asked for, and the small window of aggravated assaults only. I'm asking for murder, attempted murder, assault charges from this year, not anything else.
All right. All right. And I think there was a request also to get some stats from the same period for total crimes during the period of your slide, your sample period. your sample period. You, you, that's, that's relative.
That was for total crimes between July and September. July one and September fourteenth was the request that you put in earlier.
Yes, sir. So we'll follow up on, on councilmember's request. He said he sent previous, earlier this month. All right, any, any other items before I go to councilmember Hundra? Councilmember here.
Yeah, it's, it's on. Also, could you get us some data on any, you know, whatever the, the sheriff's departments consider as successes or just some data back from them and what it is that they're doing concerning the curfew?
I can reach out, yes. But I, I thought that was one of the partners we were gonna bring to the table as we had our further discussions.
With the sheriff or DSS?
I didn't hear you, no. I heard we said DSS, but I didn't hear the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Did we?
I think that was councilman Ingram's request.
Okay, so that's a part of it? Okay. Thank you, mayor.
All right. All right, councilmember Hundra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for your presentation this evening and for all that you do keeping us safe. Mr. Mayor, I think the, the age question, I think the chief asked it earlier as well, as far as at what point does an officer, whether it's a three-year-old, eight-year-old, twelve-year-old, at what point does it change from the officer looking out for the well-being of that child versus, you know, violating someone's civil rights? So that, that's a pertinent one. I think to your point, you know, I think Charlotte, if I'm not mistaken, their curfew was under the age of sixteen. So by tweaking that age, we can eliminate, eliminate a lot of the working because I think you have to be fifteen and a half in the state of North Carolina to legally have a worker's permit. So that eliminates a lot of that concern. But I still have personally an issue with this. So growing up, you know, a lot of kids, they may be hanging out with, in a group, four, five, six kids, a couple maybe two years younger, and then you got the two in the middle, and then you got a couple two years older. So theoretically, you could have a couple fifteen-year-olds, a couple seventeen-year-olds, a couple nineteen-year-olds hanging out. In District Nine, I represent a lot of businesses. You spoke to, to the business burdens. So coming out of the pandemic, there's a lot of stresses on businesses already. So in District Nine, we have a lot of movie theaters. We have Main Event just opened at the mall. So these are all businesses that cater to young and old alike. I think Main Event's tag is that they're a, a family, a family restaurant and bar. So, you know, those are the types of issues where you have a group, particularly if one or more of them has their driver's license, where they want to go see a new, you know, Iron Man seven or whatever. It gets released at IMAX, it's a midnight show, and they want to go see it. So these are the types of concerns. And then I think we touched on the question earlier that was never answered. You mentioned streets. So someone's maybe not driving for driving, you may need something more than just the, the look of young. But what if someone's twenty years old, but they, they look fifteen? They're walking down the street, you know, how does that, how does this curfew impact that? So those are the questions that I have. But I appreciate all the questions from all of our colleagues this evening. I think they're prudent, and we need to get some answers before we can move this forward, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hundra. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin and McNair.
Well, mayor, I was prepared to make a motion.
All right, let me go to councilmember McNair, and then I'll come back to you, councilmember.
Oh, okay. I just have a question about, chief, how well do you know your officers as far as, a lot of my constituents are concerned about if we had a youth or, or a minor that was kind of like irate and the officer wasn't pretty much equipped or qualified or trained properly to handle a situation that got out of hand, caught him off guard? So could you say that your officers, all of them, are able to handle those type situations without escalating to something out of hand?
Excuse me? To speak towards what hypothetically an officer may do or may not do without any definitive, you know, types of force, types of options. I can't speak to hypotheticals. I know what we train our officers to do. I know that if we implement an ordinance, there will be training associated with how they're expected to enforce and what the limitations of that ordinance is. We train yearly on use of force. We train yearly on de-escalation techniques. Okay? So I would say that based on the training that we give our officers, that, that, that I would hope that they will perform in a reasonable manner. For officers who don't, we have body worn cameras, we have in-car cameras, we have all kinds of cameras to monitor their activities when they have encounters with individuals to ensure that they're acting reasonably and responsibly. So I would say that our policies, our programs, our cameras, all allow us to, to, to make inferences as to how an officer would respond. And we deal with incidents there where the officer is not responding correctly or appropriately in a manner that's appropriate.
Okay. All right, thank you, chief.
All right, so counsel, what I've heard, truancy, DSS, sheriff and other partner agencies, age limit review, the data from the statistical times that were asked by myself and other councilmembers. And then I heard lastly, the fine. Right now, it has it, whereas a hundred dollars implemented, it doesn't have any warnings. It just says it may be imposed.
So you would have to make a recommendation as to what you would like to see that be?
Understand, I'm, I'm recapping to, to the councilmembers the things that I've, I've heard to make sure we've captured the concerns tonight. All right. So councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, mayor. I did want to include with that, I think we talked about it at the, the last meeting, as far as instead of the fine, possibly for the youth, some type of mentorship or for the parent, some type of life skills versus a fine.
So it, it's my understanding that would be something more for the attorney's office, that there has to be some associated penalty to the violation. There has to be, so, but I refer to the attorney on what would be permissible as a, as a penalty for the violations.
It would just need some type of enforcement mechanism, but those things could be incorporated into the enforcement. And as Mr. Benevente said, that would not be the officer's discretion or even the city's discretion. That takes place through the court system.
Okay. And so when I was gonna say, like I mentioned before, I support a curfew. However, we need to bring county, every entity that's gonna work with, you know, we need everybody at the table, you know, the county, the school board, the judges, since we know those are the individuals that's gonna possibly set the fee. So I think that we need to not only meet with these agencies, but also have a resolution or MOU stating this is what the city, this is what we're gonna do, this is what the school board are gonna do, this is what the judge is gonna do. We need to have something in writing in order for this to be successful. So if the council is fine with including that, well, this is my motion. I want to include that in the motion. So I motion that we reject this order, this ordinance as presented and for it to be amended from what council already discussed, which I'm sure you already tracking that, including a resolution from each parties. And that's my motion.
All right, so if, if, let me recap that, councilwoman. So, so basically, the motion would be to bring this back with the concerns that were stated as well as some information on the interlocal agreement or MOU with the partner agencies? For council's consideration? Turn.
Yes, that's correct. A resolution, MOU stating that this is what the city is gonna be responsible for, this is what the county is gonna be responsible for.
So an interlocal agreement between the bodies?
With, with all, with all bodies.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that motion? All right. So is the motion by councilmember Banks McLaughlin seconded by councilmember Ingram discuss, you had a question?
Yeah, it more, more of a, I guess, a friendly amendment. I'm, I do believe that we all should be, you know, actively, and I do support the resolution, but typically how, how it goes, we can't just say, do the resolution without a conversation. And so I think we gotta come to the table first and then, and, and once we all align, and I think I learned this when we went to Newport News, Virginia, that we all aligned as to this is what we're doing, this is what you're doing, and then this is what you're doing. And we all come together and say, all right, these are what we're doing to help protect our youth. And then we, we have our, our own people draw up our resolutions and sign. But to, it just sounded like you were saying no.
So I think the motion was the table until those, those barriers were met, right?
Correct, yes.
That's what I thought I, that's what I thought I said, yes. No, that was no, I was rejecting what was the ordinance that, that he proposed.
Correct.
So, so wait, hold on. Councilmember Benevente, wait one second. So just to get clarity, so councilmember Banks McLaughlin, is the table with those exclude, to, to meet those criteria?
I re, I repeat it again.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to reject the current proposed ordinance. Then also to amend it, have it come back amended as far as the questions and concerns that we had from the, the age, from the ages.
Truancy.
From the truancy, and that's why I asked him, was he tracking that?
Community partners.
Have that come back amended. In the meantime as well, is sitting down with the agencies? Sitting down with them and going from there, coming up with an interlocal agreement so that all parties kind of know their responsibility? Because if not, if the, if we don't have support from our judges, the county, it's, it's almost like we starting back from square one. It's no purpose of having a ordinance.
Can we, as the person who seconded it, councilmember Banks McLaughlin, can we separate those two so that we can give clear direction just to our police department and attorney? And then this body, because this is the work of the body for that, the second part, then we make a vote on that second part?
So, Mr. Hewitt, you had something to add to that?
Yes, sir.
I thought we were trying to say the same thing, but let's hear.
Yes, yes, sir. I think that if there is consensus generally for the motion that is on the floor, and I think you had a second, what I'd like to do is for staff to draft that up and bring that to your meeting next week for you to affirm that is the actual direction and pathway you want us to go. There are some concerns that I think we all share of asking those partner agencies to go on the record before you adopt an ordinance. That has, we've had, as you know, some trouble even scheduling, coordinating meetings with some parties of late. But trying to be responsive to that, I want to make sure that whatever you come up with it, we bring it back to affirm that is clear direction.
And I think that's good. Councilmember, if you would, consider just so it's, so it's, so it's not misinterpreted. If, if he brings it back as proposed, the revision, and we adopt that, I want to make sure that does not activate an ordinance. So can she table that with the caveats that were mentioned to, to connect with partner agencies, DSS, and, and to do the revisions as stated? What's the clearest way to do that so that this is not confusing in the record?
As I understand it, her motion was to say that as it was presented and has not been amended yet, the proposal, it has so many options that you would like to have amended that that is just gonna be used as bones to actually draft something new. We're gonna inform that with the information that we owe to the council members, and we're gonna bring that back. But at the same time, we're gonna reach out to those partner agencies to see if there is concurrence, number one, to meet. And then number two, from that meeting and shared understanding, if there's agreements that they can put together. But whether it's called tabled or reject, I think that if I'm hearing correctly, and again, I'm gonna bring it back to you guys, that there is consensus for us to move forward in drafting an ordinance that has the modifications that y'all have suggested here tonight.
And to bring it back for council's consideration?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. So there's a motion by councilmember Banks McLaughlin, seconded by councilmember Ingram.
Well, he said, just said, my apologies, because that was also a basis for this conversation tonight. When you bring it back for our next meeting, will we also need to set up a public hearing?
We, we agreed to do that once we get a document that's been revised.
Okay, so we need to read it first, okay, thank you.
And we're gonna pick it up where we left off with those, those speakers, okay? All right. Discussion on the motion, that councilmember Benevente, have councilmember Thompson.
Everyone agrees that young people should be somewhere safe after hours. I think that's the one piece of common ground that we all have. I think we also found some common ground in the first part of Courtney's motion, or councilmember Banks McLaughlin's motion, reject the current proposal because it doesn't do anything that we want it to do. From that, from that point, I think we can start to collaborate with all the partners we've discussed to do something about youth crime. It doesn't have to be a curfew. It can be one of a dozen different ideas. Let's start from the real square one. Get all the partners together to discuss youth crime and how we can impact it. Let's start from step one. We don't need to come in there with curfews and the baggage of an ordinance. We don't have to put lipstick on a pig with this. We can just talk about the common ground that we all have. Young people need to be protected and need to be safe. Are the police the best tool for that? There's a lot of data out there that says they're actually the worst tool for that. So let's go ahead and just say it. Reject the ordinance that we currently have on the table, first motion. The second motion, partner with all of the partners and work on youth crime. That can be its own thing, and we can do that with, again, all the recommendations that so many people have brought up. Stop trying to make this an ordinance, stop trying to make this a curfew if we don't have to.
All right, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. First, let me suggest that I think that we need to bring this back to a work session so we can all get an understanding of what we want to do before we have a public hearing. It doesn't make sense to present something to the county if we don't know what we're gonna do. So let's reject this proposal, then bring this back to a work session. And what we vote on tonight, can we put on a consent agenda for Monday to let them know that we're gonna reject this proposal? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Discussion on this motion, is it councilmember McNair, do you have a discussion? I see a light on.
Oh, I didn't have.
Councilmember here, you had discussion on this? All right. All right, just to recap, there's been a lot said about it. So the motion is to table with instructions to revise and to bring those revisions back to a follow-up meeting along with the other requested information. Is that correct, councilmember? Hit your mic, boys. I'm just trying to restate it so we understand.
I'm gonna keep this simple because I don't understand how everyone is confused. I'mma just make the first, a, a motion to reject the ordinance that's presented.
Okay, all right. All right. So there's a motion by councilmember Banks McLaughlin, is still a second by councilmember Ingram. Motion is to reject current stated motion as presented, right? All right. Counsel, let me tell you for. All right. Counsel, discussion, councilmember Jensen? Councilmember Jensen?
So I have a question. If, if we vote to reject this, can it come back up? Because if it fails, is it, and I'm just, for clarity, will we be able to bring it back up?
So I think they were trying to separate the two actions?
I understand.
So.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the question is, if, if this is rejected, can there be a subsequent motion to come back with the revisions?
I guess a councilmember request.
See, it starts to, it triggers, yeah.
Then we start all over again. So if we reject this, there is no going, you know, it has to come back as a councilmember request, and then we start it all over again.
All right, so counsel, so counsel, hold on one second. Just if the goal is, councilmember Banks McLaughlin, if the spirit of your motion is to not adopt this, but to, to ask staff to come back with those things that we talked about, then you need to add that to the, to the motion that's on the floor. If that is not the goal.
And the question too, if we're, if I'm rejecting it, I'm rejecting the ordinance that's being presented.
But without a caveat, then there's, there's, there's no follow-up to it. You see what I'm saying? The way you had it in the first. The way you had it the first time, it gave an action, it rejected it, and then it gave a follow-up, so.
Right. Tracking, got it, yes.
So what?
That's the motion, to reject, to reject the ordinance.
So Mayor Cohen, not to further confuse things, but I do believe we have a motion that's been properly seconded that we need to dispose of.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there. I know, we were. All right. So continue clarity and discussion, we got councilmember Hare, and I have Jensen.
Attorney, give me some clarity on this. You said that, or someone said about it not being able to come up, I think someone said, or it could have been you, that it could come back as a councilmember request. If the major, if, if it's 10 members, majority, or all of council that votes know against this item, I thought that our law, our ordinance was, it couldn't come back for one year. I'm just getting some clarity on that.
I haven't found that to be the case, councilmember Hare.
So you're saying it still can come back as a councilmember request?
Then we'll just start the process over.
I would like for you to check that for me, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Jensen had a question?
Yes.
And then Ingram.
So, city attorney said that there is a motion on the floor, and if I recall, the motion on the floor was to reject the ordinance as stated, but to come back. Is that correct? And that was what was seconded? Or what was seconded was to reject it, and then that was seconded? Because if I, I'm just trying to remember what I recall.
That was, that was, that was what? That was the motion. It was rejected and amended.
And that is the one that was seconded, right?
What I have, counsel, is she moved to reject as proposed, amend with the incorporations as stated here, and collaborate on an interlocal agreement with the other parties.
So we need to vote on that, and then we can move on.
Right. All right. Y'all, we gotta get, bring this in. You had a, had a question? Councilmember Ingram.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, if your interest is to not, not accept what has been proposed, but also get the amendments, I clearly said, we need, just need to separate the body's action for us working with our partners and leave the ordinance on its own conversation. So in my mind, the motion should have been, from what I heard you say, reject, reject the proposed ordinance with amendments to come back to us.
That was, that was what she stated.
But I am hearing that this is just now a full reject.
No, the attorney just, yeah, what you just stated was the last version that she just said.
Can I say something? That was one motion, then everybody seemed confused with the rejecting and amended.
But because they're two separate things, you would either have to withdraw that to to?
No, but I'm speaking of the first, the first motion was rejected, then amended, all in one, going to the, everybody's, like, you guys were confused, so then I separated.
So councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, could we, could we do this, please, if you are interested? I will remove the second so that we can restart this process, and if the motion needs to be reject the motion and bring, come back with amendments, that's a vote. That's a vote on its own, and then for us to have a conversation with the, with our partners, that is a separate vote. Leave the, leave the ordinance on its own vote, and then our partners in its own vote. So I will remove my second, and once you resubmit, I will second it again for the, for the, I just, but however, I'm second the motion, therefore I can remove my second. I have gave, given you a guide for how I think it should be done.
All right. Madam Attorney, you had something to interject? So if she removes the second, then we'll need another second, or the motion dies for lack of a second. All right. So seconded by councilmember, is removed by Ingram, seconded by Jensen, the motion on the floor is to, is to reject current proposal with the revisions and amendments that were stated. All right, counsel, we've had discussions, time to vote.
But did she separate from the partners?
All right.
Wait, can we go back, because it's been kind of back and forth? The motion that was already on the floor, you just, did you just remove your second?
So that you could, so that you could separate us meeting with the partners from the ordinance.
Hold on. So she removed it, you had a replacement second. If you wish to withdraw the motion, you can do that, and that will dispose of it. Or the motion on the floor that has a new second is to reject current as presented with the revisions, and for staff to return back with those revisions for council consideration. That's what's on the floor right now.
And again, just to be clear with the motion, it is to reject what was just presented, amend what we've discussed.
And to come back.
As well as with the agencies.
That needs to be its own vote.
But it gives, it gives, it will give staff direction to do it.
Then I can second it again.
Well, your second's been withdrawn.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. Y'all, we're making this way too complicated. So there is a motion on the floor as stated, it was seconded by councilmember Ingram, if you wish to do that now.
That's fine.
Let's vote, all right?
Dawkins red.
All right. Who hasn't voted, Jen?
Honduras.
Councilmember Honduras, you gotta be kidding me. All right.
What was it?
All right. So the motion, the motion was to reject the proposal that's in your packet as presented, to also give direction to revise it with the things that were pointed out tonight, and to come back with those revisions for council consideration, as well as reach out to the partner agencies.
No, it couldn't be disposed of because it had a second on it, and it wasn't withdrawn.
So we're disposing of it now, this is it, this is the original motion. This is the original motion, she restated it, and the second reaffirmed it. So we need, we need your vote, councilmember, whether it be in affirmative.
Dawkins red.
All right. Counsel, all right. Motion carries nine, one, those voting in opposition, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins.
No, that's not true, sir.
Okay. There's a new screen up. All right. Seven, two, those voting in opposed were Dawkins and Benevente?
And Disconder.
Well, that would be three. Yeah, my screens are not showing.
He didn't get the, he didn't hit because he's on the phone.
All right. All right. So those voting opposed, Honduras, Benevente, and Dawkins. All right. All right. Counsel, again, tough work, this is just the beginning phase of it. I hope that as we continue to engage, we will reach out to our partners, reach out to community members, and continue to get things to bring back for consideration at our next opportunity. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I do, I want to ask a clarifying, this is what I meant earlier when I stated about us being can do. I, I want our conversation to be about protecting our youth. I don't think, you know, we really have to bring the ordinance to them. I think our conversation should be about youth protection. I just want to make that very clear, that earlier, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, counsel, motion?
Piece of direction, Attorney Pulliam, we got a letter from the ACLU that was not presented in any shape, form, or fashion by our police department. I would like for you to present on the contents of that document so that we have all the facts, not just the far right, but we also have another perspective as well.
All right, counsel, motion?
Mayor Cohen, is that a council member, I mean, a council directive, or is that a, is that an email, or what is that?
We asked for a lot of facts, and that's a piece of fact that we got in our mail, we should get that presented.
Well, we all, we all received it, but I think the presentation part of it, we can work offline if it's not official ask, but she understands the request to provide.
Well, while we're still in session, I'll make a motion now then. I move that we direct our staff to present on the ACLU letter so that the people of Fayetteville get a full perspective on the curfew, not just one side of the argument, but a full perspective. Is there a second?
Counsel, there's a motion by councilmember Benevente, seconded by councilmember Honduras, to include this in the information that's gonna be brought back. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Discussion, the questions on that? All right. Councilmember Ingram.
Okay, thank you. So when you say present on the information, I just want to make sure I'm tracking, can you give some understanding or clarity as to, yeah?
The ACLU sent all of us a letter, and they outlined three reasons why youth curfews don't actually reduce youth crime, and how it could actually be an unconstitutional abridgment of people's civil rights. And we need to discuss all of these things because thus far, no one in our city staff has presented on any other perspective except for pro-curfew, and it's time that we get a full, comprehensive discussion, not just one side of this debate.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor, seconded, to bring that back and include it in the next presentation with the other information. City Attorney, you had a question?
Well, I wasn't done.
Ma'am?
I will wait for the vote.
All right. So counsel, I'll look to you for a vote. I think we're all interested in all the information we can gather, but if there are no other questions, counsel, I need you to vote on this, and Mayor Pro Tim, we need your vote as well.
I wasn't necessarily done.
Oh, okay.
So I, I'll say this, I don't mind whatever information being presented, but I will say this, we asked a direct question of the police, okay? We asked a direct question of the police, and they brought back within whatever their realm was, and so we are in a place where we can take it or leave it, amend it, flip it, however we want to do it, and that's what we're, we're saying, and so I'm, I'm okay to hear whatever information, but in the perspective of the law, it's kind of, what, what kind of else were you kind of expecting to get? Now, what I will say is, thank you, chief, for doing that youth summit, for, you know, to bring those individuals in, but I'm looking forward to the chief or attorney presenting that information. However, I think we are in a good place because we are now saying, we are actually going to go talk to our partners and have this conversation. Thank you.
All right. All right. Counsel, we had a motion, we had discussion. Counsel, Attorney, you had something?
Thank you, Mayor Cohen. I just, before the vote, would like to say that that is a position paper of the ACLU, so maybe the council can invite the ACLU to come give that presentation. I think that would be more appropriate.
All right. All right. So initially, the motion is to include it wherever the council wants to go with that, if they want to invite someone to speak on that, that's certainly a follow-up. We're gathering all information we can, I think, to make a prudent decision, so, counsel, that is the motion. Councilmember Hare, your light is on.
Yes, sir. Just one question. As far as that part there goes, we have, well, I assume we, I'm going to assume that we all have probably received five, six, maybe even 10 different viewpoints from organizations, former judges, former council members, and so what are we doing about those?
Well, well, but, but if the goal is to include, you know?
It wasn't a matter if it was pro or con.
Legitimate opinionated ones, pro or con, you know, whichever side.
I mean, I was saying, that's what we're doing.
All right. So the motion right now is to include this one in the presentation. I think that the spirit of the council is to, is to get all legitimate inquiries, people will have opinions about it, and, but organizations that have, that have made a stance that if that is germane to us as we make this decision, I think council and the public should hear. All right. So there's a vote, there's a motion on the floor, council, we need votes on that. Let's include it.
Dawkins red. Dawkins red.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim is red. All right. Those voting in opposed to the inclusion, councilmember Hare and Dawkins, motion carries. All right. Motion adjourned, counsel. Have a good evening.